The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Two River Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the township clerk all on January 11, 2024. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hyboll. Mayor Perry.
I was going to see if she was going to respond. Uh, for Deputy Mayor Hyboll, uh, I'm here.
Okay. At this time, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. The first item on tonight's agenda is the Administration of the Oath of Office. This time, I'd like to invite Christopher D. and his family to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room. These are for promotions to Lieutenant.
First, I just want to say good evening, everybody. Obviously, a very exciting day for Middletown here. A lot to celebrate and a lot to get to. It's great to have a packed room. I love it. Um, so I just want to welcome everybody. Honored to do all these promotions and swearing these great officers. So I also want to just want to give a shout out. Sheriff Golden is here, not only because we're doing radios, but because of all these great police officers that were promoting today. Chris, lift your Bible. Raise your right hand towards God and pray after me. I, Christopher D.
I, Christopher D.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Lieutenant.
Of Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
Help me God.
Congratulations. He just got a contract. I swear.
Thank you. One.
One more?
Yeah, sorry, one more. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I would like to invite Stephanie Geisel and her family to the front of the room to join Mayor Perry.
He doesn't want to take a picture. Suck empty my... Raise your right hand towards him. I, Stephanie Geisel.
I, Stephanie Geisel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Lieutenant.
Of Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
Great, thank you. One, two.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I would like to invite Brian McGrogan and his family to the front of the room to join Mayor Perry.
Holy God. He got up.
That's the freakiest thing that ever happened to me. Unlike these pretty casual procedures. Ready, bro? I, Brian McGrogan.
I, Brian McGrogan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people. And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially. And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Lieutenant.
Of Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God. Congratulations. Yeah. We're all about to know each other a lot.
Great, thank you. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the Administration of the Oath of Office for Sergeant. At this time, I would like to invite Elsbieta Benel and her family to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
I, Elsbieta Benel.
I, Elsbieta Benel.
I didn't pronounce it as well as I expected. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I would like to invite Anthony Bombico and his family to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
I, Anthony Bombico.
I, Anthony Bombico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Am I taking too long? And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You want to say cheese on the count of three? One, two. You want to say cheese?
We're doing this again at our next meeting, but... Whenever a three-year-old tells you that they are speaking English... They are not.
I don't know.
At this time, I would like to invite Kevin Mahan and his family to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
I, Kevin Mahan.
I, Kevin Mahan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
The hours are long, the pay's not that, or any... Jason. You want to wait?
We got time.
At this time, I would like to invite Jason Troshane to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room with his family.
Do you have children?
Huh?
Okay.
I, Jason Troshane.
I, Jason Troshane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same. And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
What do you mean by Stitch? What is it? Let me see. Is this legal?
Yeah, that's how.
Or is that Stitch? That's Stitch, right? I'll take my word for it.
Wait till Lieutenant. It'll be fine.
Thank you. Sorry. One, two, three. Thank you.
We need to give it up for Hudson, I think. When we go to the governments established in the United States, I start to get a little worried.
Look who's boss.
Yeah.
I want to blabber this. The biography's up there. They're outstanding candidates. They're going to be great supervisors, mentoring, guiding, and leading our young police force right now. So I'm proud of each and every one of them. Terrific backgrounds, cool on the Gwinsoo, the crisis negotiators, SWAT officers, school resource officers. Very dedicated supervisors who have a lot of character and technique. They're very influential tonight. Estimating to be a wonderful turnout for the department. We thank the governing body, the mayor, sheriff for their comp and support. So thank you so much.
Let's give it up for these... I just want to say this. I want to thank Kachief. I want to thank everybody involved, and I want to thank these officers and their families in particular. I say it all the time, this is not done without the families. You know, you may be wearing that badge, but it is the families that are also wearing that badge each and every day. So nothing but success, nothing but safety, security for you, your families, and for the township of Middletown. We're proud of you, and we're proud to have you serve as a superior officer. So thank you all very much.
John.
John.
Thank you.
All right, let's hear it one more time.
Last thing I was going to say. On the eve of Lieutenant Tease's promotion to sergeant, he asked me some advice. I said, stop at sergeant. Best job in the department.
But we just have a couple more presentations, so we just ask you if everybody could just hold tight real quick. Karen?
So the next item on tonight's agenda, we have certificate of appreciation and proclamations. Distinguished Citizen of the Year presentation. At this time, I would like to invite longtime volunteer firefighter and LoSAP coordinator John Drucker to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
So we're going to keep the great feelings going here. There are key people that you rely on when you are, when you're the mayor, when you're in a part-time job, and whether that's from the PBA, SOA, your police chief, your fire chiefs, individuals that are there, your administrator, individuals that are there to give you the insight that you might not have, to make you understand what the job entails. And I rely heavy on those individuals because it's an absolute team effort when we get things done and when we can. And there has been a lot of people that have helped me along the way. But what a lot of people don't realize is that there's so many people out there that are helping individuals, and no one knows the job that they're doing. Because they're not looking for a headline, they're not looking for recognition, they're not looking for the spotlight, they're just looking to do a great job for their community, for their family, for the families of Middletown. And one of those individuals, I am very honored to recognize here today. John Drucker has been a friend since I got onto this township committee, before I was on the township committee, giving me unsolicited advice. And solicited advice. But it's the unsolicited advice that's more important, because it's an individual that's telling you something that you probably don't want to hear, but it's necessary for you to hear. But John is beyond that. We have a great LoSAP program rewarding our volunteers, and John managed, helped not only design it, but manages that so that our volunteers that fit that criteria are rewarded for their service in a very small way, but a very impactful way. And John Drucker has been a leading voice on that. Every September 11th anniversary, there are people out there that wear it on their sleeve, not about what occurred on that day, but reminding people of why it is an important day to reflect upon, why it's an important day to understand what happened on September 11, 2001. That's John Drucker. There are people out there that are dedicated to their community and have been serving it for almost 50 years as a volunteer firefighter, that have ran away from their dining room table. His wife Jane is here, who's a nurse over at Re Medical Center. There are people that are running away from that dining room table, running away from their families, from soccer, from football, from sporting events, because the town needs them. That's John Drucker. So every year, we decide on an individual that is deserving of Middletown's Distinguished Citizen. And normally, I do this in like March, April. But when you really think about it, you try and figure out somebody that's worthy of calling them the Distinguished Citizen, it's hard. You put pressure on yourself to find that great individual. But the reason that we do this job, the reason that we're here, is because we want to see a great community. We want to build a great community. We want to thrive in a great community. And most importantly, today, I think we have had more kids in this room than we have ever had before. Why is that important? It's important because the Middletown that we are going to pass on, they are going to be the leaders of. They are going to be the recipients of that. And we can only build a strong Middletown so that they can have a stronger Middletown. That's defined by John Drucker. You know, I called up the deputy mayor, who I know it's paining him to not be here. But Rick is sick, and I'm sure he's watching on the web here. Because when I called him, I said, hey, Rick, I thought about Distinguished Citizen. I said, I just wanted to let you know who I've decided upon. And he says, let me guess, John Drucker. And I said, yeah, how'd you know that? He says, because you always try and take from me what I eventually think I'm going to get. And I said, well, that's why you're the deputy mayor. But John, you have helped every single person up on this dais. You have helped thousands and thousands of volunteers, volunteer firefighters. You've helped promote and make sure people and young people understand what we all witnessed on September 11, 2001. Forever is understood, not because of the destruction and the death that we saw on that day, but for what it stands for today, what it means for today. So on behalf of the entire Township Committee, John, we are presenting you and awarding you as 2024's Distinguished Citizen of the Year. And this key is hereby presented to you. A volunteer firefighter since 1975, your leadership, bravery, and unwavering commitment to the safety and betterment of our community have had an incredible impact on Middletown. Your time and talents advocating for volunteer first responders over the last decade as the Township's LoSAP coordinator are unmatched and appreciated by every dedicated volunteer, especially your peers, in the world's largest all-volunteer fire department. It is hereby given on this, the 24th day of June in the year 2024, by this governing body, as a small token of appreciation for all your years of service to this great community. Congratulations.
I was born here. I grew up here. Served in the fire department in the Mass. And I can't find enough things to do. I just love our town so much. And it is really a wonderful, wonderful mayor. Thank you so much. And baby, thank you so much. That's the chief for my brothers. It is a great honor to serve in the volunteer fire department and continue to serve. There are no words. I encourage anybody who has the times to step forward and take that step into the fire department and serve a community. And that's the one saying that I like the most is, many communities, one Middletown. Thank you very, very.
Real quick, I just want to say this. So I call up Chief Morrissey here, and I said, I just let you know, we're going to be giving John the Distinguished Citizen. And he's like, yeah, I know. I said, well, how'd you know that? Because really, nobody else, I mean, John doesn't know. And he goes, well, somebody asked for background information. So I just kind of assumed that that was what was happening. And so last week, I started panicking. I'm like, boy, did anybody invite John Drucker to come to this evening? So basically, we're buying all the radios for the fire department, and that was the guys that we were doing it under. But I call up Jane, and I said, yeah, we kind of need John on the 24th to be there. I said, it's really important because we're not buying any radios unless John's there, because it's really the biggest thing that we have. The sheriff said, no, I'm pretty sure you're buying these radios. But so to the chiefs, John, John, your entire family, I had to say something to them. Jane, come on up. I had to say something to him because when he saw that his cousins or nephews were here.
They're all back here. They ended up, my neighbors are back there.
They all wanted to add up. They were all advocating for a page.
Jane's one. John said, it's really important. All of my whole.
Because I wrote all the information. And Chief Morrissey, my friend, my long friend, John, you got to be here. About the radios, you need all the technical data on the radio.
John, this is a full page. So. So when I ask for public comment, you don't actually have to read that if you want. All right, let's give it up for John Drucker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
One more.
You too. You want me to come right under the seat?
One like this, like this, okay? One, two, three. And one, two.
Real quick. You had them inspected radios up in the fireworks office?
It worked, right? It was live.
All right, all right. Hold tight, everybody. Real quick. We have two more presentations that we just want to get through. The well-deserving individuals that we want to honor. Karen?
Okay. Next, we have a presentation recognizing individuals for their assistance with the Conover Beacon restoration. At this time, I'd like to invite the Department of Public Works master welder Justin Van Arsdale, Department of Public Works director Ted Maloney, and Leonardo resident Vinnie Moran to join Mayor Perry in the front of the rooms.
So as many of you know, we were fortunate enough to have a great guy in our public works. Back in 2021, I want to say, Ted, Tony, and I met in Tony's old conference room in Town Hall, and we started discussing the restoration of the Conover Beacon in Leonardo. And if you haven't been out there yet, please go out and take a look at it. Because the first time I went out there and got to see the vault opened up, it was nothing to be proud of. It was really in bad shape. In fact, I was a little bit nervous about standing inside because it was obvious that seawater had gotten in so bad that the center support beam of the Conover Beacon was completely rusted all the way through. The first three steps, I think it was, of the staircase that goes all the way to the top were gone. And this is a piece of our history, a piece of the town's history. And as we approached America's 250th anniversary, this year, we're celebrating Middletown's 360th anniversary. We started putting our heads together as to how we were going to restore this beacon. And a lot of vendors didn't want to touch it. They didn't want to touch it. They were too nervous. We would bid it out and go through the whole legal process that our qualified purchasing agent makes us go through every time. You know, no offense, Mike. But it's long. It's crazy what the state laws require of you. And Ted calls me up, and he says, Tony, I just want to let you know, Justin, I think he can do the work. He tells me he can do it. And I said, Ted, give him whatever tools he needs to be able to get this thing done. That Conover Beacon, when we got to unveil it earlier this year, freshly restored, new paint, Reagan and I climbed all the way to the top. And yes, those three stairs were back, plus the center beam was. But it was because Justin was able to make that happen. And I think it's even more important. And out on that plaque, it pays special tribute to the public works employees that were able to get this done. And Justin, without you, without you stepping up and saying, we can get this done. We don't need anybody else outside that was too afraid to do this job. That beacon in this past weekend, I don't know if you heard, we had a bunch of straight line winds that rained through Leonardo. But the reason I bring it up is because it might have fallen over. That's how bad a shape it was in. And so when you talk about people that go above and beyond for their job, you could have kept going, doing the things that you were doing. But you took this on, you made it happen. And I know I'm incredibly appreciative, the township committee is. But when you saw the opening, the rededication of that beacon, you saw what it meant to the people of Leonardo, and you saw what it meant to the people of Middletown, to the history of our town. And because of you, it will now be able to survive the next 150, 200 years because of your work. So and this all began because Vinnie Moran, who normally sits right in that back corner back there, kept bringing to us documentation, schematic, showing me. And I said, all right, I'm all in. You know, it was one of those brick wall speeches that you're ready to go. And so because of him spurring that idea, and because of your efforts, Ted, the Township Committee agreeing to fund that project, that beacon is here to stay and will be a proud symbol of Middletown for generations to come. So Justin, thank you very much. Open that for you, then. A beautiful picture of what you have created, been able to help create, and grateful appreciation of your invaluable contribution, helping restore and preserve the historic Conover Beacon in Leonardo, allowing it to illuminate our shores once again. Justin, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Just, we've been a great employee with U W. Saves us tens of thousands of dollars a year by keeping our fleet going, our snowplows on the road. But when we were trying to fix this very unique structure, we were scratching our heads. We were talking to water tank manufacturers and metal building fabricators and shipbuilders to try to figure out how to fix this thing without totally breaking the bank. It was called NASA because of the spaceship. But then I realized, we have a metal fabricator. We have essentially an engineer. He's also an artist, really. He stepped up and really rebuilt this whole structure in two hands over several months in the heat and the cold, working on Saturdays, trying to get things going. And again, not only did he save us probably hundreds of thousands of dollars, he also gave us a great work of art and restoring that beautiful structure over there in Leonardo.
Thank you again. I'm jealous of Ted's work of art line that he just gave out there. But Justin, thank you again. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's give it up for Justin. We hired somebody. It's Harris looking up in the air. Thought he was free. He tried to, a poor guy tried to escape without a picture.
One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, Karen, let's do this.
Okay, next, we have a presentation recognizing Middletown High School South Track and Field State Champion, Rosemary Shay. At this time, I'd like to invite Rosemary to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room along with Coach Vic Fayers.
So I'm already tired looking at how long this race was. Um, you know, we've, we've been very fortunate, and I say it all the time, uh, since I feel like we, we opened up and moved into this building, we have had champion after champion after champion. Um, and that is a testament to Middletown's athleticism, its coaches, and its athletes in particular. And I'm flipping through the Asbury Park Press and I see this unbelievable picture flipping through. I'm literally, does the Asbury Park Press still print anything anymore? I asked, I was scrolling, and Tara says they do. I'm scrolling through and I see a big Middletown South logo. And there's Rosie. And I'm looking at it and I'm like reading and reading like 3,200 meters. Like, oh, I got a tough feeling how far that is. Um, but when the, the way that the Asbury Park Press had, had made it out, it was of, you know, track and field. And I get further into the article and I realize this, this is an unbelievable champion athlete that has been represent, that is representing Middletown, that will continue to represent Middletown in every way we want young people to represent Middletown. And for you to have won this state championship, 3,200 meter race, again, I'm tired saying that out loud. Um, it just shows the will, commitment, and dedication you have to your sport, but also that you have, and may not realize it, to your town. Because when you're putting that effort in, when you're, when you're with your coach, putting that time, energy, everything into these races, it, it's above ourselves as individuals. It's, it is for the community, for, for, as a victory for ourselves, but a victory for the school that is represented on the front of your jersey, just as much as it is the back with your name on it. So when, when young people come in, I want them to always realize that you're representing those two institutions, your family and the town and organization that you represent. And for Rosie, that was Middletown South, but it was for your family. And I can only say congratulations on behalf of the Township Committee, myself and everyone here that appreciates your dedication, your commitment, and everything you do to represent Middletown. We appreciate and we applaud you for that. So let's give it up for Rosie. What you don't realize, how many months ago did you win this race?
Uh, this month.
No, no, no. Didn't you win it previously?
Oh, yeah, in March.
Oh, yeah, I won. I won it, I won it too. Um, and where are you headed off to college?
Villanova.
I'm a Temple University graduate, I can ascend it by that. But congratulations, uh, the Wildcats are lucky to have you. So Rosie, on behalf of the entire Township Committee, um, we want to, uh, provide you with this certificate on winning the 3,200 meter race at the 2024 NJ SIAA Track and Field Meet of Champions. Congratulations on ending your high school running career as a state champion. Over the last four years, you have grown tremendously both as an athlete and as a person. You impressively won this race twice within three months, once at the indoor championship in March and again at the outdoor championship in, in June. You also won third place in the 2024 NJ SIAA Cross Country Meet of Champions. And as a true team player, you don't prefer, you don't, you don't only cheer for your teammates, but also for your peers at other schools. And we are incredibly proud to join you in celebrating this extraordinary achievement and wish you all the best, yes, at Villanova University. Congratulations. And Hybol couldn't be here tonight because he knew I challenged her to a race with him. That's why he came to be sick. Coach.
Um, thank you, everyone. Congratulations to everyone who's here tonight. Uh, just real quick, um, congratulations to Rosie. I've been lucky to coach her the last four years. Um, it's been truly a blessing. She's been willing to work extremely hard and all of that hard work has paid off with her two state championships and, uh, her heading off to Villanova next year. So while we will all miss you at Middletown South, the town and everybody's very proud of you, especially myself and your family. Congratulations.
All right. She says she has nothing else to say other than. She wanted to, needed to let you know that. I love this embarrassing, like, you know, yeah. Anyway, congratulations, Rosie.
One, two. Congratulations.
Let's give it up for this chief.
Okay, one more to go. One more to go. Okay. Okay, our last presentation this evening, we have the DAR Youth Citizen Award Presentation to Riley Higgins. At this time, I would like to invite Riley, Middletown DAR Representative Kim Best, Serena Schreiber, Molly McCabe, and Detective Rick Cruz to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
He's right. Yeah, how you doing?
Doing well.
Dylan?
Yeah, first one's not nice.
Okay.
You have the name tags on. If you, this is your show, if you want to, if you want to. Um, but, uh, first of all, I just want to, everybody here knows Kim. Kim, welcome in your civilian role here, right?
Thank you.
Uh, but I want to just introduce quickly Serena. Um, and Serena is a member of our America 250 Board. Uh, we're, we're working on the, um, the 250th anniversary of American Independence and, uh, is heavily involved with the Daughters of the American Revolution. And as, as I know, she has told me every single time, the ability to become a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a very intense, uh, background. I don't want to call it a background check, but they're, they're, I'm looking at a bunch of police officers over there, so. Um, but, uh, a, a great organization that recently kind of moved to Middletown, um, and formed their own, their own organization. So, um, I'll let Serena and Kim kind of kick it off here.
Well, thank you very much and good evening, everyone. Um, on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution in Middletown Chapter, thank you for coming to today's ceremony. Um, I'm Serena Schreiber, and I'm the Vice Regent of our chapter, Middletown Chapter. We're two years old. And, um, the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, also known as the DAR, uh, was founded in October 1890, and it thrives today as a nonprofit, non-political volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for adults and children. DAR has a long history of supporting youth and good citizenship. The DAR Youth Citizenship Medal recognizes a recipient that has distinguished herself through outstanding leadership, honor, courage, service, and patriotism. This year, our recipient, Riley Higgins, was nominated by Middletown Police Explorer Advisor, Detective Ricardo Cruz. Riley is a 14-year-old freshman at Middletown High School North where her dedication to academics and the arts shines brightly. Growing up in Middletown with her father, a now police lieutenant, and her mother, a now nurse practitioner, Riley has inherited a keen sense of community service and a passion for helping others. From her early years at Harmony Elementary School to Thorpe Middle School, Riley's love for music and performance blossomed. She actively participated in the school chorus and proudly joined the B Natural Show Choir, highlighting her vocal talents and stage presence. Riley currently volunteers with the Middletown Police Explorers and has been part of the Middletown Police Youth Week since childhood as a camper and is now giving back by volunteering her time as a youth counselor with the program for three weeks each summer. In the past, her commitment to community service also led her to volunteer with Middletown Helps Its Own and the Girl Scouts of the Jersey Shore, embodying her family's values of support and generosity. In the spotlight, Riley thrives. She has contributed her creative skills to Middletown High School North's drama productions, including providing hair and makeup for It's a Wonderful Life, a live radio play in 2023, and acting in The Weirdest Honeymoon Ever the Same Year and Young Frankenstein in 2024. Riley's enthusiasm for theater, music, and Broadway fuels her dream of becoming an actor in the future. Riley is also a student athlete. He swims competitively. On behalf of the Middletown Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, it is my honor to present this medal and certificate to Riley Higgins.
There's Tara.
Ravenstone. That's her trademark.
Two, three. Congratulations.
CJ's taking a picture.
Yes.
Um, Rick, Rick, I'm going to say, okay. Riley, congratulations. Um, um, congratulations at, at a time when we're, uh, when we're talking so much and so frequently in the news about, about America's history. And, um, it's, it's a proud moment, not only for me, but I know for the Daughters of the American Revolution to have you here, to have these people here to celebrate our great American history, to be proud of our history, and to reflect on that history, most importantly. Um, and, and, and I think there needs to be a more abundance of Riley's out there that are willing to participate in that process and understand and know and appreciate that American history. So on behalf of the Township Committee, I want to congratulate you. We want to thank Detective Cruz for, who's whispering over there, um, for, for nominating you and for having such a great family that works tirelessly to better our community, whether that be in healthcare or as a police officer. And by being recognized by the Daughters of the American Revolution truly is an unbelievable honor. So congratulations.
One, two, three. Perfect.
All right. Let's give it up for Riley.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, Riley.
Yes, yes.
All right, we're.
We just have a proclamation for the record tonight. It would be recognizing July 10, 2024, as World Airway Disorder Day in the Township of Middletown.
Thank you.
We're going to take a quick, maybe two, two, one minute recess. Counting now.
Okay. All right. Joe, you want to bring that mic up? Okay. Oh, you were. All right. Okay, Karen.
Okay. Next, we have approval of minutes for the May 20th, 2024 regular meeting and the June 10th, 2024 workshop meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Committeeman Sennabrino.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sennabrino.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve the minutes. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing of proposed ordinances. Ordinance 2024-3420, bond ordinance, will have no action taken tonight. We'll move on to ordinance 2024-3421, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $2,525,000 for the acquisition of emergency service radios and other related equipment for various departments, by and for the Township of Middletown in the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $2,398,750 in bonds or notes of the township financing part of the appropriation.
Um, before, uh, we're going to, we're, well, we're going to open it up for public comment on 2024-3421. Uh, I want to invite Sheriff Sean Golden up. I know he, uh, has been a, a, a leading advocate for, for this enhancement and not only has been assisting us, um, in getting this bond ordinance together, but making millions of dollars in not only repairs to our, um, radio towers in town, but also supplying part of the allocation for these radios to our, um, fire department. So Sheriff, thank you.
Mayor, as usual, thank you and to the Township Committee for all your support of law enforcement and public safety as displayed by all the promotions this evening. I want to congratulate all those, uh, superior officers that were promoted. And I want to congratulate John Drucker, who, with his technical data sheet, probably should be up here. You know, I, I, I laugh, uh, there, you know, we know his, uh, dedication and commitment to the community, but it goes beyond that, I assure you. As, uh, we look to him in county government and sometimes when I'm called upon by other towns about these different codes and everything for fire, I say, call John Drucker. He'll, you know, he'll tell you. So, um, you, you do have such an asset in him and all your fire chiefs, uh, who've worked hard and tirelessly to transition to county dispatch. And this is, uh, one of the final steps. So as you know, we upgraded, uh, some of the software systems. The county commissioners, under the leadership of Director Tom Arnon, uh, have invested, uh, millions of dollars in the county infrastructure for our first responders, uh, including this trunk radio system. And so, uh, just with recent improvements, uh, last year to the systems in Hazlet and Highlands Towers, and now with the, uh, over $750,000 investment that's going into the Red Hill Road Tower, uh, which will provide coverage for these radios you're about to purchase. So, uh, the first responders in terms of interoperability, uh, and particularly the police department, as every surrounding police department, uh, in Middletown is on the current trunk system, and we're going to welcome Middletown PD onto that system. It's going to be great to have them interrupt with, uh, the neighboring towns. And they'll get more channels and, and certainly have better coverage, uh, in their, uh, work and line of duty. And then, uh, for the fire department as well, this is a big transition for the fire departments in Monmouth County. We are investing in Monmouth County. The commissioners passed a similar bond ordinance of over $5 million for fire radios, of which that will be, uh, added on to some of the radios that you're purchasing for fire, uh, for your 11 fire stations and, and some other needs. So collectively, this is a big move. It's the last component in county dispatch. Uh, we have EMS police already on board, and now we're going to be bringing, uh, the fire departments uh, on board as well, and Middletown's part of that project. So, uh, again, we want to thank you for the investment in public safety and the security and safety of all the first responders.
Yeah, Sheriff, thank you so much. Appreciate your leadership. Appreciate everything that you're doing for the county, county dispatch. Uh, we're, we're fortunate to have a great partnership and with the commissioners and everybody. I, I think I can speak on behalf of all the Township Committee members and thank you, you for your leadership when it comes to public safety. And, you know, Chief Kelly, Chief Morrissey are here. Um, and just to certainly appreciate that, that ongoing dialogue that.
ongoing dialogue that is always available through you and under Sheriff Dawson and everybody that's under your leadership. So, thank you, Sheriff.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much. Thanks.
Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on public ordinance number Chief Morrissey.
Good evening, Kevin Morrissey, Locust Point Road. Mayor, Council, I want to thank you for sitting with us and understanding need. It's comforting to know that we have your support. Sheriff Golden, I want to thank you for being a great partner with us in this. We're fortunate, we have two former fire chiefs on the council. Their understanding, their knowledge of our needs from day to day cannot be overstated. And I really just want to say thank you and really appreciate you looking out for the members of our department.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you, Chief Kelly, the entire chief's ranks that are always there for a call. And just, I think, our last meeting or two ago, you all ran out of here after that meeting to a fire. And when I went out there and to see an unbelievable response, I mean, there must have been hands, easily 50 volunteer firefighters that had left their dining room tables to go to this fire, along with an additional dozen EMS volunteers that were there as well. So, certainly appreciate everything that our volunteer firefighters do, and thank you for your leadership as well. Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3421? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sennabrino.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have introduction of proposed ordinances. Ordinance 2024-3422, and ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 2024-3418, amending and restating ordinance number 2023-3371, solely as to the established fair market value for property identified as Block 1045, Lot 2, Nut Swamp Road, Block 1045, Lot 3, 1114 Nut Swamp Road, and Block 1045, Lot 4, Dwight Road, within the Township of Middletown.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sennabrino.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading, with the public hearing to be held July 15, 2024. Next, we have a public hearing on grant application for the Monmouth County Open Space Grant Application for Kunkel Park.
Janet, for any meeting for Vinnie Moran not to be at, it's, this is the one I thought he would definitely have been at, but...
Make the best.
Yeah. Like it.
All right, I'm just going to wait for our presentation to be posted or displayed. Awesome.
Okay, so just briefly, this is for our Monmouth County Open Space Grant Application for 2024. This year, we're proposing to do the Bill Kunkel Memorial Park. Briefly, Joe, you can advance the slide. Just briefly about the grant application or the grant program, it's an annual grant funded through the Monmouth County Municipal Park Improvement Project. There are, there's up to $6 million that they set aside for this, with each award being up to $500,000. These are some of our past grant applications.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Because I think it's important to note, that at the request of this governing body, we, and at your leadership and bringing it to our attention, that open space grant cap went from 250,000 to 500,000 as a result of you bringing it to this governing body. And thank you to the Monmouth County Parks for, the Parks Board for making that happen, not just for increasing that amount, but also then allowing for us to get more of a reimbursement when it comes to open space. So, I just want to point that out, that Janet certainly was the one that brought that to our attention and is able to make these projects more possible. So, thank you, Janet.
Thank you so much. Yeah, this is the second year that the cap has gone up to 500, which is great. These are some of our past projects that I wanted to share with everybody. 2023's Botman Park Baseball Field, 2022 was the McMahon Park Phase 2, which was for tennis courts and basketball courts. In 2021, we had the McMahon Park Phase 1 for pickleball courts. 2020, we had McMahon Park Phase 1. It wasn't selected that year, but we revamped it up for 2021, and it was selected that year. 2019 was the Normandy Park Soccer Complex. 2018 was Kunkel Park Pickleball, which we obviously know now, it's now the skate park. So, I think that was a good year to have that one not selected. And then in 2017 was the Kurden Hall Playground. So, you can see, we've been pretty active with this program and pretty successfully each year, which is wonderful. So, like I said, mentioned before, this year's grant application is for the Bill Kunkel Memorial Park Improvements. For this one, we have a number of different improvements planned. So, to begin, we've got field improvements for the baseball field that's there. We're actually looking to propose a combination 4660 and 5070 baseball field and softball field. We're having an open concept with covered dugouts, warning track and a home run fencing, a scoreboard, new backstop, portable mound with onsite storage, scoreboard, I said that already, I'm sorry, aluminum bleachers with concrete pads. We're also proposing tennis courts improvements. Right now, there are three tennis courts. We're proposing to resurface the entire area with new fences, new tennis courts, a new tennis nets. We're actually going to do two tennis courts and two pickleball courts as well, since that is a very fast and upcoming sport. We're looking to improve the playground as well, with a brand-new playground with pore-in-place rubber, which is what the same surfacing that we did at McMahon Park. So, that would be a great ADA accessibility project for this playground. We're also proposing a new asphalt perimeter walking path, similar to what's at Dorset, so parents and kids can walk the path, they can learn to ride their bike there, they can scooter, rollerblade, et cetera. The one thing that is listed on here, but it's not part of the grant application, I do want to mention, it's the resurfacing of the basketball courts. There's two basketball courts that are out there. We're not proposing in that grant, in this grant application, because we're actually dedicating money for that to happen this fall, as it is. So, that's going to happen, we're pulling that out of the grant application. So, overall, the park will get a full renovation. I could advance it. So, this is a small, it's a picture of it. It is a little bit small, I apologize. It's pretty much everything I just talked about with the baseball field, the warning track. You can see the asphalt path that goes through the entire perimeter of the park. On the bottom of it, we talked about the tennis courts, and there's two pickleball courts as well. We have a storage shed for the portable mound, the playground, kidney-shaped playground, not a square playground, and the basketball courts. You can advance the next slide, Joe. I think I talked, I'm not going to read the whole slide to you guys, but we talked about the benefits of the project already. The one thing I do want to say is that, you know, this is named after Bill Kunkel, which I'm not sure if many of you guys know, but he was an MLB player and also an MLB umpire. We kind of, the way the park is right now, we're not really doing it justice for what he did for the town, for his community, did for his career. So, we'd like to kind of put a little bit more effort into maintaining the baseball and softball field. So, granted, if we receive the grant, once the product's done, we will rededicate the field in his, we dedicate the whole park in his memory. Again, talking about the different sizing of the fields, it is one of the biggest age groups that we have in baseball, is the 4660 and 5070, plus the 60-foot softball field. So, it's a benefit for everybody. We talked about the playground, we talked about resurfacing the tennis courts. So, they're really, the benefits are endless to have this program. The renovations go to Kunkel. And now the budget part. So, like we talked about before, the, we can get a grant of up to $500,000. The total cost of, the total hard cost projected for this program, for this grant application is $1,742,910. We're estimating $200,000 in soft costs, which unfortunately are not eligible for the grant program. So, I'm requesting, if we do receive up to 500, I'm hoping receive the full amount, I would be requesting $1,442, sorry, $1,442,910 in capital match. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Joe to please go back to the picture of, yes, that's the one, and we'll open up for any questions.
Okay. Any members of the committee that would like to ask a question?
Just one. What's the time of the grant receipt and then the potential timeline for the project?
So, I can talk about the 2023, if that's okay? So, for 2023, last year, we applied in July, so this application's due July 11th, we find out in October. We actually just got both the 2022 and 2023 grant agreement signed by both us and the county in May. So, barring any red flags for capital bond ordinance coming up, hopefully in July or August, we'll be able to start that. So, it does unfortunately take a little bit of time to go through all the rigmarole of getting everybody to sign the grant agreement once we receive it.
Any other questions for Janet in the committee? You know, obviously, we've made a large capital improvement to part of Kunkel Park, which turned into our skate park, which was unbelievable, the grand opening unbelievable earlier this year, lessons being offered to the public, to young people. And to me, this is, this will be a great next step to completing the overall viability of Kunkel Park, not only memorializing Bill Kunkel's memory and legacy in Middletown, but also providing a great legacy for Leonardo to have this unbelievable new park, you know, made up. And Janet mentioned that we'll be going, we've been working to get bids for all of our basketball courts throughout town to be done all at the same time, basically, which will be happening later this, later this year. But this is, will be a great park, and, you know, it's one of those parks that really deserves that complete facelift for it. It had the one component with the skate park, but now with the rest of it, it'll be a great new park for the town. Any other member of the committee have any questions? Okay. I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on this grant application? Okay, seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve. Janet, great job.
Thank you.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sennabrino.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to close public hearing. Next, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda that would include Resolutions 24186 through 24196, including firefighter applications.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sennabrino.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt the consent agenda. Next, we have the Township Committee acting as the ABC issuing authority. Resolution 24197 is a resolution authorizing a place-to-place liquor license transfer, plenary retail consumption license 1331-33-010.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sennabrino.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt 24197. Next, we have 24198, and is a resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses for the 2024-2025 licensing term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeewoman, Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sennabrino.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 24198. Next, we have Township Committee comments.
Committeeman Clark?
I'd like to, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first congratulate all of our officers on their achievements. The leadership starts from the top down with the police department, and Chief Weber's exemplified great leadership, and it shows with each and every one of his, each and every one of his officers that have, that are getting promoted, have been promoted, and will continue to, which I think is awesome. The, I think the radio upgrade was underplayed a little bit, and I think the amount of, the amount of energy and effort that's gone into upgrading our radio system over the last nearly 10 years, in cooperation with Monmouth County, in cooperation with multiple iterations of our Township Committee, the police department, the EMS, the amount of conversations and data, you know, we're joking about John Drucker and having his list, right? It's, it's pretty amazing. You think, when you, when you hear about stuff like this, right, you click on a radio and you talk, and you don't realize the hundreds of thousands of man-hours and dollars and energy and effort that goes into making that one-click work. And our chiefs that are here, you guys have done an excellent job of continuing the work that was started earlier on to make sure that our fire department has state-of-the-art equipment, state-of-the-art support, and you guys are doing an amazing job. So, thank you. And the rest of the committee, some of you have been here through this entire trial and tribulation and the administration, and some are learning. The decisions that we make up here literally have an effect on everything that they do, and our support is truly, speaking as a former chief and firefighter, the support of the committee in whatever iteration and the administration is super important. So, I'm glad to be a part of this side of it now, I'm glad to have been part of the other side. And Janet, I think she popped out, I just thank you for a great presentation and continuing to try to make our parks awesome. So, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Committeeman Sennabrino.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke with Deputy Mayor Hybel before the meeting, he ceded all of his public comment time to me for this evening, so.
Oh, good.
I need about an hour and a half tonight. No, I continue to be amazed and in awe of the depth and breadth of this township, coming from a small town to a town of 68,000 people, that just, you continue to have people of all ages and individuals stepping up to make this town what it is today. And I'm just honored to be a part of that town and to be able to contribute to it. That's all I have for this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Committeewoman Kratz.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to offer my congratulations to all of our sergeants and our lieutenants that were promoted this evening. It's, what a, what a meeting. It really is amazing when we have the opportunity to celebrate so much. So, just wanted to acknowledge all of them, to Riley Higgins also, a big accomplishment and really something to be so proud of. I still would like to see Deputy Mayor Hybel and the mayor have a little race, or at least race Rosie, that would, that would be something. So, I'd love to see that one someday.
I'm not worried about coming in first. I know that, I'm just, I just got to come in second, that's, you know?
But, yeah, so just wanted to, again, just express my thanks, you know, that this past storm too was just evidence of really how dedicated all of our emergency service personnel are, and really can't thank them all enough for their dedication and their time. And it was a crazy past couple of days, so again, you know, our thanks for all of their hard work, for sure. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Yeah, I want to echo Committeewoman Kratz's comments, her last comment in particular. You know, over the weekend, we were, we were hit. We were hit by a really bad storm that came at us very quickly and very intense. And from Tony Mercantante to Buddy Skelly, to our fire chiefs, Kevin Morrissey and I were hanging out at a water main break over in Linkcroft, to the police officers that were guarding all of the fallen trees as it began, as darkness started to fall on Middletown, that were crossing the road at Center and Thompson, all up and, all through Leonardo, in particular, through Navasink. Charlie Rogers, Charlie Errett, all of our fire chiefs, Fire Marshal's Office, Administration, everybody was working seamlessly, and that's what made it easy. Ted and his crews that were out there, it was, I was concerned because it was working so well. And, and it sounds weird, but when everyone is clicking on every level and communication is clear, and Tara and Raven and John Werner from the police side, the Nixal communication, the communications when it came to the power... to the power outages that were occurring, that's what makes it where, when I walk into Town Hall this morning, there are no messages about what we are going to, why aren't we doing this? And that was because every single person was working and was getting done and was in constant communication with each other. So Tony and everyone that I mentioned, it was, it was working well. And when I was out in Linkcroft, and when I was up at Kings Highway East in Chapel Hill, when I was out in Leonardo, I mean, I stopped in the middle of the street, and the, these individuals have no power, their house is now at eighty-eight degrees, and they came out and they said two things to me. Number one, thank you for all of our emergency services personnel, and thank you for stopping by. And I said, I, I said to this woman, I'm like, it's no problem for me to stop by, it's the police officers that are sitting here for hours on end waiting for JCP&L to get here. It's our fire chiefs driving from point A. And by the way, while all this is happening, there's hundreds, if not thousands, of other calls that are all occurring at the same time. That doesn't mention the emergency, our EMS teams that are working in ideal beach while everyone's out of power in Leonardo. It doesn't talk about the, the water collection that our OEM teams are doing so that the people who are out of water are able to get that water and dropping it off. I do have to give a shout-out to the folks over off Leedsville Drive. They started tailgating the, the, the water main break. Hey, they didn't know what else to do, so they tailgated outside, you know? It works for them. God bless, you know? But when I got to Town Hall today, talking to News Twelve, talking, it was one consistent theme, and that was our emergency services personnel. They did, they worked, and they made sure that every single resident knew everything that we knew and what we were doing. And that takes a collective effort. So on behalf of the, the entire Township Committee, from our professionals to our volunteers, thank you guys seriously, very much. You did a hell of a job over the weekend, and it, it does not go unnoticed. So appreciate it very much. So thank you, guys. Tonight, another big item that was on our agenda, you know, I can go through all the, all the presentations that we had, but as many of you have seen, the three final phases of remediation over at the Veterans Housing Project have been ongoing. Today, there was a twenty-foot hole that was dug, remediated, and filled back in with clean fill, finalizing the, the second phase of that, of that final remediation. One final phase to go, which will have a, a slight lane closure over on Leonardville, that the police will be directing traffic for, because it is so close to the curb line. But tonight, almost two million dollars under budget, we have awarded the construction of the Veterans Housing Site, and there's a lot of things that I'm proud of that we've been able to get done over the, over the six years that I've been the mayor, and the seven years I've been on this governing body. But today will stick with me for a long time, because at one point, we were thinking to ourselves, how are we ever going to be able to afford this? We had budgeted one amount, we had gone out, and when we got those bid backs, bids back, they came in at three million dollars over, over what we had budgeted for. And several individuals collaborated, put their heads together, came together, from Maureen Raish on down. I mean, I was on the phone with Maureen, and she helped me figure out that final million dollars of, of where we were going to get that money from. And so it's taken too long, no doubt about that. But it's finally here. We got it done, we're getting it done. We're, tomorrow, we're meeting for our pre-construction with our architects, our, our contractor, to get this project done. And the fact that we've awarded it here on this, the twenty-fourth of June, I, I'm real happy, proud, and grateful to the Township Committee for everything, and for all of our professionals for everything that they've done. Unfortunately, it's just a resolution. But, and, and unfortunately, it's a, it's a, it's a consent agenda item. But it won't be a consent agenda item, it won't be a simple resolution to the people that end up living there. So I want to thank everybody that was involved in getting that done. With that being said, I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. Reagan asked that you keep your comments to five minutes, and at four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Had a little bit of an emergency today, so I figured I'd bring the real Deputy Mayor to the meeting. And I am baffled at how quiet, especially being related to me, she has been through these two hours. So, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yeah, Carl?
I came here tonight to see the awards presentations.
So just say, just, I, I know who you are, Carl. I, I don't have your address memorized, but just state your name and address for the record.
Carl Rathgen, fifty-two Pelican Road, Middletown, New Jersey. I have seen many awards given to our wonderful folks, volunteers in Middletown. And I, but I haven't seen an award given to our committee for the amount of work that you've done. As a former NOM Air Force veteran, I'm so glad to see that we're getting the housing done. I remember when I first came to the planning board at least four or five years ago, and I appreciate it very much. And thank you for all the help that you folks do, that no one has told you about. I'm sure they may have, but I'm telling you, thank you.
Thank you, Carl, appreciate it. Any member, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Don, come on down.
Good evening, Don Watson, living at one Collinson Drive in New Monmouth. I too am happy to finally see that Shell gas station turn into something a little more useful than a reclamation project. I also see that we contracted a landscaping service. Is there something that this group is doing that our grounds and building and grounds department can't do?
Uh, yeah, and that's do what the state should probably be doing. I don't have enough people to mow every jug handle, and I know the state loves to, you know, see high grass in the jug handles and, and all that good stuff, but we can't handle all of them, plus what we normally have.
Right.
Um, so there.
If you want them cut every week.
Well, if you lived across the street from a jug handle, you'd probably want to see it cut, right?
I used to lead a group.
What's that?
I used to lead a group of volunteers that maintained jug handles in Middletown. And like the day before, we were scheduled to go over to cut the grass, the Township was there to cut it before us. I just wanted to thank you guys for that, years ago, long before you were probably even born.
If I had a nickel for every time I heard that.
Yeah.
I'd still be broke.
Yep. So they're mainly to hire, they're hired to.
They're, they're hired to, in, I mean, we had them last year, too. They're, they're there to supplement anything that's not being gotten to, or, or is, you know, technically outside the, the bounds of what the, the Public Works team should be doing. We, we also continue to add swaths of open space that need to be maintained.
Right.
Um, and the town, in fact, Ted and Tony and I met probably last week or two weeks ago to talk about some of these areas that can probably be returned very nicely back to nature, as they should be. We needed a plan, we can't just allow the grass to grow, you know, six feet high. We want to plant some trees in these areas, plant some wildflowers, support the pollination, pollinator groups that are, that are struggling at this point in time, and, and try and return them back in, in a manner that doesn't disrupt any of the, any of the neighbors that are around these areas that see them every day.
Right. I just did that with half of my backyard. We killed everything last fall, and we planted all kinds of flowers, and it's.
Well, you have a lot of milkweed, don't you, Ted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So does Ted, I hope. Okay, good. Because I gave away all my seeds this year. My daughter's growing it down in Virginia right now. But I got tons of milkweed. The backyard is so fragrant right now, because they're all blooming.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, it's beautiful. And that plus bachelor buttons, and there's flowers that grow them back there. I had no clue what they are, but they're unbelievable. Yeah, or the bag of.
Don's now the head of the, so appointed, the head of your new pollinator group.
They do. I got all kinds of bees on the milkweed, and the butterflies are moving in there, too. Yep. Um, there's something, yeah, maintain, we came back from Virginia last week, and we're coming down Red Hill Road, and, you know, the sides of Red Hill Road coming down the hill need to be cut. I know, I don't know if you guys do that, but.
Yeah, we do. We usually close the road for a day and cut it all.
Yeah, everything's starting to hang out in the road. That was last week.
Probably.
With this rain we had, it's all, all in the streets.
Probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll probably be out there doing that.
Yeah. All right, cool. I was just curious about the landscaper guys.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually less expensive than it was last year. And just to kind of support the Public Works teams, because we, you know, we want to be as, as a responsible for the taxpayers and responsive to their requests. But when we're sending out teams that should be cutting parks and should be lining fields and raking in fields, and ensuring that the, the tennis courts are blown from leaves and debris and branches, that we're, we're getting calls simultaneously that the islands aren't being maintained. So now we're.
I'm the governor.
I'm sure, I'm sure they'll be cut this weekend.
Yeah, especially on Navasink River Road.
I, undoubtedly, they will be cut on Navasink River Road.
Yeah, for sure.
And if, for any resident that is listening to this ahead of Saturday, don't travel down Navasink River Road on, on Saturday, okay?
For sure. Yep. Also, your daughter's exceptional.
What'd he say?
Cut her tongue out or something?
Oh, thank you, Don.
I got little ones like that, then.
I would have brought all of them, but I didn't think the Township Committee would be able to take all three of them up here.
Well, I don't see Ryan doing anything. You can sit there.
Ryan knows me well.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Don. All right, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Reagan? Nothing? Oh, no. All right, seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, including Reagan, move to close the public portion and adjourn. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Setimbrino?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you all. We'll see you in July, July fifteenth.
July fifteenth.
Oh, I got that right on the money. All right, July fifteenth. We do not have a meeting on July first. Have a great Fourth of July, everybody.